Good evening, everyone. This is Seth Hopkins speaking. It's 7 o'clock. I just want to make sure that the whole board is here because the faces are not in their usual places. So I'm here. I see Tim Giles. I see Brian Coolidge. Is Tracy Wyman? Yeah, I see Tracy now. How about Mike? Is Mike Markowski on the call?
I'm here, Seth. I'm working on eating dinner, so I won't be on video. You guys don't want to watch me.
Okay. Thank you for the consideration, Mike. So we have the board all in attendance. I'll call the select board to order at 7:01. The first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion relative to the agenda?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second to Mike's motion?
Second.
Tim has a second. I do have a change that was written, not change. I have an addition that was requested. So in number eight, could you add A, 8A? And that will be the bid results for the town-owned lot number 9-1-23. Bid results for the town-owned lot number 9-1-23. This is something that came to the board a meeting or two ago, and we have some update. Any other additions to be made to the agenda? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as it was amended by adding number 8A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. Bill Moore, could I ask you a very special favor? Can you put a letter A or something in front of all the board members' names? Because they're not lined up where they usually are.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Item two, approval of the select board minutes of March 8th. Those were submitted in the packet. Is there a motion on the?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve for Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. Does anyone notice any errors or omissions in the minutes as read? None heard. All in favor of adopting the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I believe that was unanimous. Before we get to the town manager's report, I'll just, courtesy announcement, we have the meeting agenda that you see here. And then there's also a Board of Liquor Control Commissioners meeting to happen tonight. So that'll happen before the executive sessions. So the town manager's report, Mr. Atherton, please.
Good evening, everyone. This is my report for the weeks of March 8th and March 15th. The Route 7, Segment 6 project was the grand award winner of the Engineering Excellence Award from the American Council of Engineering Companies of Vermont. So that's pretty cool. And I guess we were also, we were nominated for the Park Street project on another engineering thing. So we'll see how that ends up. We're supposed to get a plaque sometime soon, so we'll probably hang it in the conference room. Attended the March 16th Rutland Regional Planning Commission meeting. There was discussion on some proposed solar array projects in a few of our neighboring Rutland County towns. And also Senator Terrence Zini was present as a guest speaker. He provided us with updates on what he's been up to in Montclair. So these meetings have been a little bit calmer since we've been doing them Zoom. And I don't know if you folks know, like, we weigh in on regional topics or regional planning, regional development. Solar's been a big one. There's quite a bit of criteria that the Regional Planning Commission looks at to determine whether they want to support it or not. So it's a good, it's a good meeting to attend. The 2020 Town Audit has been completed. Copies of the audit were put in your select board packets. Figured if you guys wanted to review, and we could bring it up at the next board meeting for discussion. Bill Moore has drafted a letter to the citizen who is concerned about activities at Esterbrook Park. Copy that letter was also attached to your board packet. Been working with Aldrich and Elliott and USDA on meeting all of the application requirements for the possibility of funding for the wastewater treatment plants. As you know, we have a couple options that were presented to us. We'll see a couple notices in the Brandon Reporter for the next two weeks on that topic. Public Works has been busy adding gravel to wet areas on our dirt roads. The dirt roads are in surprisingly good condition for this time of the year, so that's been nice. Public Works, oh, sorry, I said that one already. Met with Stephanie Burke at the RRPC to discuss our requirements for municipal roads general permit. And this is for hydraulically, hydrologically connected roads. We have to have 15% of our road erosion issues corrected by December 2022. Our road erosion inventory was completed in 2017 and will be using this as our checklist in getting these projects completed. We have done quite a few of them already, so our percentage will be going down, you know, for 2022. So Sean and I have been reviewing that now, which is, and we can get grant funding for these and things too, which we've done in the past, so. Rec Department news. Mr. Moore says warm weather means the end of our ice skating rink. Big thank yous go out to John Millen and Matt Wilson of the Nashby Golf Course, John Kerr, Lance Larroway of Silver Maple Construction, Tanner Romano, Coal Nation, and Josh Provinsor of Neller and Breen, Mike Johnson, Ray Counter, Tom Kilpeck, Brian Kilpeck, Jeff Mashein, and Josh Prezlow, and the many folks who took the time to shovel the snow when we got snow. We are pursuing a grant to make the experience even better for next winter. Rec will be offering part-day summer camps this summer. Stay tuned. And looking for folks that may be interested in coaching middle school lacrosse for the Rec Department. So give Bill a shout or an email if you want to do that. Get It and Go continues to distribute meals on Mondays thanks to community donations. Last Monday, they distributed 280 meals. So it's been going pretty strong, and thanks to all of them for, all the folks for volunteering that. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dave. Before we get to other questions, can I just ask you about the town audit? Will the auditors be coming to make their presentation to the board at some point this spring, or?
So, yeah, I mean, that's usually, they do it annually, and I can see if they can zoom in on the next meeting. You know, they could do, give us a little rundown. You know, Sue and I have talked about it a couple times too, when they would be coming, so we can reach out to them.
Should we do it before the next board meeting, like maybe this, maybe at 6:30 that night or something? Because I know that sometimes they can get a little bit detailed for general public interest, but it might be of some interest to the board. And I believe that I just sort of semi-promised the hearing folks that we would probably be talking about noise at the select board meeting. So that's kind of a media agenda item.
Sure, it'd be up to you guys how you want to do it. I mean, we, fortunately, we don't have much to discuss in our audits. They've been coming back, you know, nice for the last quite a few years, so it's up to you.
I see Sue Gage is on the call. Sue, do you have any preference? Or do you want me to warn me off asking the auditors to come at 6:30 instead of at 7?
No, I think that'd be fine if you would like to hear from them. Yeah, they'd be happy to do that, so.
Okay. What's, what's the other input from the board? What's the rest of the board like to hear about that?
I think it's a good idea.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think the public might be interested, so it'd be, you know, we'll just let everybody know when we warn the meeting that 6:30 is when they can come if they want to hear that part.
Yeah, I think I'd like, I'd like to do it that way if that sounds all right. I heard a yes from Brian. Mike, you feel okay about that?
Yeah, I feel fine about that.
Tracy? Why don't, Dave, why don't you make it up as two separate items? Like, put a 6:30 meeting to hear from the auditors and then a 7 o'clock meeting to start the select board, okay? Thank you. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Dave, but this is so intriguing to me because I crave external affirmation. Can you tell us more about this grand award winner thing? What does this entail? What is the organization about?
So it's the American Council of Engineering Companies of Vermont. And they do, well, I mean, I kind of, there's a letter I got here that we came, we're the grand award winner. Well, Fusen O'Neill was formerly CLD. It was selected by the panel of independent judges for transportation during our annual judging event in February. And they, they just really, I guess they really liked the engineering design on it. So that's really what it was about, was more of the design and that, you know, it's finally on the ground, so.
Okay. So questions for the town manager, and we'll start with the select board first. Anybody on the board want to give Dave a question? Anyone from the public tonight with a question for the town manager?
Yes.
Yes, Mary Lou Webster?
Yes. I attended the, the meeting on Saturday on the noise ordinance. And it wasn't read into that, minutes of that meeting. I would like to read my letter tonight that I addressed to the select board so the general public knows exactly what we're talking about here. I'd like to do that at this time.
That, that will be fine, Mary Lou. I will just say that, I did say during the hearing tonight, and I thought I said on Saturday, that all of the written testimony that the select board received, all of the written contributions are made part of the record of the two hearings and are being compiled by our recording secretary, Charlene Bryant, and our town manager, Dave Atherton. And they will be compiled into one all-encompassing document. But if you would like to read your letter into the record, that is absolutely fine.
Thank you. This is a letter I wrote on the 13th of February of this year to the Brandon Select Board. This letter addresses concerns I have over the mismanagement of Esterbrook Field and the upcoming debate over a noise ordinance for Brandon. For select persons who are newer residents of Brandon, I would start with a brief history of Esterbrook Field. The field is approximately 12 acres acquired from the state of Vermont and originally part of the old Brandon Training School. With grant money from the Land and Water Conservation Fund through the Vermont Forest Parks and Recreation Department, the town began development of Esterbrook Field in the summer of 1983. It was built with grant money to develop a recreational field for athletic sports. It was named after and dedicated to the memory of a local physician, Dr. Seeley Esterbrook, because of his great interest in sports. Until recently, it has always been used for this purpose and has always been confined to daytime use, which has not presented any conflicts with the surrounding residential neighborhood. During this last year, the town began a series of new activities, primarily at night, which violated a series of town regulations. Since the field's inception, there has always been a posted sign alongside the dirt driveway entrance stating the field hours as 7:00 AM until dusk. This sign has been moved to the field's northern boundary, into the brush line, where it is difficult to see. I assume that this was done to minimize its message in light of the nighttime activity last summer. Some of these functions were also of a commercial nature and required entrance fees or were profit-making venues. The town has a sign posted along Route 7 at the field's entrance that clearly states, prohibited overnight camping, abandoned vehicles, commercial enterprises. Apparently, the town feels that citizens should obey all town rules and regulations, but they are free to ignore them when it suits them. In past years, the town has also placed an extremely large unsightly sign, small billboard, across the road from our home that, when I measured its placement, was well within the state highway right-of-way and not on town road right-of-way or property. I could also find no permit on file for this sign at the town office. Again, the town ignored regulations to suit its own purposes. Now, the town of Brandon is going to debate the need for a noise ordinance, and that brings the issue of night activity in Esterbrook Field into the discussion. This marks a substantial change in use of the field and not one in harmony with the residential neighborhood that pre-existed before Esterbrook Field was built. The noise down there last summer was highly disruptive. I followed this issue in the Brandon Reporter police log and noted that I was not the only person who called in noise complaints to our police department. It was so bad during these opera nights that even with all the windows and doors closed on a warm night, we still could not sleep. Operas, carnivals, and rock concerts are not compatible with and do not belong in people's neighborhoods. The town of Brandon's current board seems to be resisting the need for a noise ordinance. Is this because they do not wish to be placed in the embarrassing position of having to conform to it themselves? I have only good things to say about our police department. Whenever I have seen vehicles down there in the field after dark, they have always responded to my calls if they were available. 99% of the time, they have been there, and I thank them for their service. They work diligently to keep our neighborhood safe, but they can only enforce the law and ordinance, not create them. A noise ordinance is a tool very sorely needed, both to maintain the peace in our neighborhood but also with the many other noise issues that have arisen around our community. I am in firm agreement with the need for a noise ordinance for Brandon. I also want to see the posted hour sign returned to its original location after the, along the inner driveway and an end to nighttime use of Esterbrook Field. Regardless of unusual circumstances, it is no justification for our town to ignore their own policies and laws. And I can add a postscript to this. Since I wrote my letter, I've had a conversation with our police chief, and he advises me that the posted hour sign is not sufficient. The select board really also needs to put up a sign that states that Esterbrook Field is closed after dark. You need to work out the wording of that with him. But that, that also needs to be done. And I will add that there was one time I called in to report noise, and that was in the afternoon when they were trying to set up the amplifying system. And I was calling to ask them to turn it down then by half, and the police dispatcher would not put my call through to the police. And I was very disturbed about that. Now, that's the end of my statement.
Thank you, Mary Lou. I see in the packet that there's a response been composed by our rec director, Bill Moore. Mr. Moore, do you want to, Bill, do you want to read that?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So I have a response, a response I gave to the select board for this, for this meeting, a response to a letter addressed to the Brandon Select Board regarding Esterbrook Park. I received a letter submitted by Ms. Webster regarding the increased use of Esterbrook Park and a perception that the activities are in violation of the intended use of the park. While I do not share the long history of the life in Brandon that Ms. Webster does, I spent much time in my pre-rec director days as someone who enjoyed recreational opportunities at Esterbrook Park. The prescribed use of the park by the people who worked so very hard to obtain the LWC grant program was reflective of the way in which people recreated in 1983. We spent much more time out of doors, less time engaged in the electronic arts, for lack of a better word. Esterbrook is still a wonderful resource for athletic pursuits. Since taking over as rec director in 2012, I've made it a mission for folks to see Esterbrook for the underused recreational asset that it is. Prior to my tenure, the majority of the field space was a hayfield. The rest of the property consisted of a tennis court, pavilion, and softball diamond that were primarily used for spring and early summer events. Varsity tennis, tennis lessons, girl softball, T-ball, adult softball was moved out of the space due to neighborhood complaints about the potential consumption of alcohol on the grounds. Right away, we moved an extra set of soccer goals and used the space for youth soccer. That winter, we moved the ice skating rink from the wastewater treatment plant to the field. Esterbrook continued to see increased use over the next few years with the moving of some adult activities, like a weekly cornhole league, to the field along with some special events, some of which became recurring, including a teen rock festival, Esterbrook Harvest Fest, and Spooksville, and the Brandon kickoff to summer carnival. There will be increased use of the space with plans for the creation of a walking path, a bicycle pump track, and movement and reconstruction of the tennis court. During the COVID-19-stained year of 2020, we had to cancel the four-day carnival, added a drive-in movie screen, and hosted for the first time a socially-distanced opera. On the Fridays in September, we hosted a concert from 6:30 to 7:45 before the drive-in movie would start. The sound for the movies was broadcast by way of the car radios. Our plans for 2021 and beyond include a resumption of the drive-in, the Brandon Carnival, fingers crossed, and a partnership with Barn Opera. Besides those three exceptions, the rest of our events that produce potential disruptive neighborhood sound end by 8:00 PM. Upon the receipt of the letter that Ms. Webster submitted to the board, we began to investigate the history of Esterbrook Park. When the park was established, there were no restrictive covenants, save the requirement that it be used for recreational purposes. In 1994, the select board at the time, by a 3 to 2 vote, passed a resolution limiting the time from 7:00 AM to dusk and referenced the lack of lighting and the limited verbiage of the past resolution. My intention as recreation director has been and always will be to increase recreational opportunities for all of Brandon's residents. The popularity of our family-friendly events aside, if Ms. Webster had expressed any concerns prior to her letter to me, they could have been addressed. We, as a small community, enjoy the unique ability to pick up the phone and call on our neighbors when conflict has arisen. The idea that there's been some sort of nefarious plot to deceive or flaunt the rules for commercial or personal benefit is simply untrue. After what must have been a complaint, our temporary banners that we used at the park were addressed with guidance from the zoning administrator. We moved the wagon, reduced the total square footage, and the duration of the display of the temporary event-specific banners. The discovery of the 1994 resolution was surprising, but again, I stress not an intentional ignoring of the rules. Going forward, I would ask the select board consider the following actions. One, rescind the 1994 resolution. This was seemingly controversial in nature at the time. Two of the select board refused to sign. In the lighting issues that the resolution references have been remedied by the installation of new lights and temporary lights on the evenings for which they are needed. Two, encourage Ms. Webster to reach out when she has any issues. I've successfully worked with the other Esterbrook neighbors directly adjacent to the park on the eastern border. I'm confident that I can work with Ms. Webster to provide advance notice of our evening plan, evening event plans, and to work to mitigate any extraneous noise at her property. For example, a potentially problematic event. 2020 was the inaugural year. The Barn Opera production can be reworked to allow for less sound, moved to a location near the middle of the property, and to be completed at an earlier hour. There are steps that can be taken once we're aware of the issues. Communication is the key to avoiding any potential misunderstandings. Respectfully submitted, Bill Moore, Recreation Director. And I do want to add that last year, those were the only events that we had. The carnivals were going on for the last few years, but again, my door is open. Ms. Webster could call me at any time. And again, we have the ability. If we'd known there'd been issues, she could have called me, and we could have addressed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mary Lou, the select board, as you know, doesn't do the day-to-day operations of the town. You know, we have a professional town manager. We have a professional staff, including the department head for the recreation department. And that would generally be the folks who are making the decisions about, you know, what kinds of events are happening and how it's going to support their program that the select board has endorsed by hiring the professional staff and by budgeting for a recreation department. So I just wonder, I wonder, Mary Lou, if I could ask you whether Mr. Moore's response was sufficient to answer the concerns you raised? Or if you would like to have a meeting perhaps with the professional staff, which would be the town manager and Mr. Moore? And the select board, generally speaking, would want that to happen before the select board became involved? Because the select board's job is not to micromanage the town. The select board's job is to hire the town manager and to set the policy for the town.
Which is why I sent my letter to you, because I know the select board is in charge of policy. And I think that setting a policy for how this big piece of public property is used should be something that's your responsibility. And going from daytime to a nighttime use is a significant change in policy, and it's not acceptable.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board about, yes, Tim Giles?
Yeah, I noticed that Bill, you know, appropriately asked for specific, this rescinding of the 1994 resolution. And it seems like what our typical process is, that if we want to do any kind of policy change, we warn it for our next meeting, and then we discuss it and act accordingly. And I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to bring up the possibility or the clarity of defining what's going to happen with that, the 1994 resolution at our next meeting?
I think that that's in keeping with how the board has generally operated. I certainly appreciate that Mary Lou has submitted such careful concerns. I certainly appreciate that Bill has submitted such careful response to the concerns she raised. But certainly, the board would not generally wade in and rescind a 25-year-old, 26-year-old, whatever, resolution without laying it over a meeting for some consideration and discussion. I'm seeing a hand from the town manager.
I think he accidentally pushed clap when he meant just.
Yeah, there's like a new hand raise thing that didn't used to be here before. It was just. So one thing I just wanted to say that, you know, we brought up this 1994 resolution, and I would just like to read a couple lines off, if I may. Just the first three sentences. It says, "Whereas Esterbrook Field is currently posted to close at 10:00 PM, which is well after dark during all seasons of the year, and although there are plans to install security lights at the park in the near future, there are no lights nor plans to install lights for athletic events or other park activities, and that there are no authorized park activities that can place after dark." Maybe I'm reading this wrong, but because there were no lights down there at the time, and there were no lights brought in for any events, which was why things were not allowed to happen into the evening. I do know that we have closed things down around 10 o'clock. We've had to get folks out of there. We still need to keep the lights on so they can leave the area safely. But we have been very accommodating with safety and planning to ensure that people are leaving there with lights on and in an orderly fashion. So I just wanted to bring that to light, no pun intended in there, that, you know, this really seems to be a discussion more on because there wasn't well-lit areas down there as to why that was closing at 10.
Thank you, and I do thank the town staff. I don't know who did the research, but thank you for bringing the 1994 resolution and some minutes from September and from August of 1994, which were the board meetings ahead of the adoption of that resolution. That was helpful context, for me at least. Shall we, shall we then go ahead and say that at the next meeting, the board will consider the use of Esterbrook Park, consider a policy on the use of Esterbrook Park? Does that find consensus on the board tonight?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so Dave, you've been busy already jotting down stuff for next meeting, but could you place on the agenda something to the effect of, we're going to consider, we're going to consider the, a policy on the use of Esterbrook Park? Yes, Tim?
Yeah, I just noted in the chat, and I noticed that Mary Lou Webster is calling in on a phone, so she probably doesn't see the chat, that in the chat, Lee Cars wrote, "Hi, Mary Lou, can you email me your letter to the board?" And so I just wanted Mary Lou to have the benefit of the chat information.
Yeah, thank you.
This is from who?
This is from Lee Cars at the Brandon Reporter.
Okay, I can do that.
Do you need her email address?
I think I can probably find it in the paper.
Okay.
Mary Lou, if you have any suggestions that you would like to be, to see incorporated into a policy regarding Esterbrook Field, we would very much like to hear from you about that. So you, you and I have known each other for the whole time I've been in Brandon here. A phone call would be fine, or if you want to send an email to the board or a letter to the board or the town manager. If you have some suggestions about what you think would be neighborhood-friendly uses of the park that will help us as we're getting ready to reexamine the operation of Esterbrook Field.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thank you, Bill. Brent Bueller has a hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Brent Bueller here. Could you folks also include in the package then for next week, the 94 resolution and the minutes you're referring to, so everybody's on the same page as this discussion goes forward?
I'm sure we can. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
I didn't realize actually that that didn't make it into the... That wasn't in the public packet, Dave? I don't know. We get a little packet and I guess I generally assume that what we get is what is posted online as the public packet, unless we get something that's actually stamped confidential because it's a hiring matter or something of that nature. So if it didn't appear, it was an oversight and I apologize. And we will clearly have it provided in the next one. I'm sure it can be done.
I honestly don't know whether it's there or not. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I won't look right now because I'll lose my place. Anything else to be said on Esterbrook Park tonight, since we had a little discussion on this? Mary Lou?
No, I'm aware of the 1994 notice that they put out. A lot of that was because of complaints I made about the softball league drinking. And that sign was put up prohibiting drinking and posting the park hours at 10:00 p.m., which was kind of unrealistic at the time because on the longest day of the year, it's dark down there by 10:00 p.m. Again, because of my conversation with the police chief, I think the Select Board needs to sit down with him and come up with a sign clearly posting that the park is closed at night. And along with the hours, however you want to work that out. That needs to happen.
Okay, thank you. Charlene, did you catch that comment? More or less? Yeah, thank you. And Brent, just to follow up, I do see over on the town website, it's in the publicly posted Board packet, the resolution and the two or three pages of minutes from preceding the resolution in 1994.
Yes, I just saw that too. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else to be said on Esterbrook Park? No? Okay. If not, we're still in that section about asking for public comments or for public questions to the town managers. So does anyone else on the call tonight have a question or a comment for the town manager's consideration? There's always public comment on every agenda item. You can interrupt at will. So we'll go to number four, which is public comment generally. This would be public comment for stuff you don't see later on the agenda and something you'd like to raise that's maybe not particular to the town manager, but could be an announcement, could be... We have two state representatives on the call tonight, which we always appreciate. Tim Giles has something?
Yeah, I get a bunch of emails as being on the Select Board for trainings. And one of them was free, and so I decided to sign up for the Tree Warden School. I'm really curious about what our Tree Warden does. And one of the first classes, it goes for like three or four weeks, but one of the first week's topics was apparently a recent change last year that requires the Select Board certify our Tree Warden. And I just wanted the Select Board to know that that's something we need to do at some point. It's possible Dave's already done something with this, but I'm hoping to bring an update to our future meetings with other interesting factoids about Tree Warden activities.
Thank you, Tim, for that update. Dave, can I ask you, is that a devolved power to the town manager? Did you get anything about certifying the Tree Warden and/or are you aware of it?
I received an email from Tim either last week or the week before that we had to go register at the state website, which is exactly what I did.
Okay, thank you for taking care of that. Generally, when there are things like that that say the Select Board needs to do this or that, there are many, there are only, I think, something like 40, 42 towns in Vermont have the town manager form of government. But the statute in Vermont is that if you have the town manager form of government, basically, all of the Select Board duties devolve to the town manager with a short list of exceptions, like setting the tax rate and hiring the town manager and things of that nature. So Dave, I appreciate you picking that up. Go ahead.
All this was, was like a certification that we had a Tree Warden that was appointed by the Select Board that would be on a state list. So it was more of a contact type thing. Like I asked if we could give out his email and his phone number. So just remember, director.
I will take the opportunity to thank Tim for attending those trainings. He attends a lot of side trainings trying to kind of be well-rounded in municipal matters, and that's helpful to the whole Board. I attend some when I can. And I also want to thank our Tree Warden, Wayne Kingsley, who does treat that job with a lot of professionalism and dedication and concern. And he's just been really a super addition to the tree, the health of public trees and to generally speaking, the public tree program in Brandon. Further public comment items someone would like to bring up that they don't see later on the agenda?
I'd just like that. I believe that Wayne is... I believe that Wayne is also taking that course.
Yes.
Yeah, Tim, you said that you've...
Yeah, he's been in touch with me. We chat.
Great. Other public comment? Okay, we'll go on. We've got the local...
Oh, Seth, sorry. I didn't get to my unmute on time. Yeah, sorry. In my... In lots of my review of town stuff in recent memory, I know that... I just had a question about the conflict of interest policy. So I'm curious if there's a policy or what oversight? Do we have some sort of third party over the RFB and contracts, our contracts, to ensure that there's no conflict of interest on the Select Board with our Select Board members? I say this because I know Tracy Wyman is our contractor with our transfer station. I know he also logs on some of our land. And I know that we've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to the Markowskis. And I don't mean this in a rude way. I'm just curious where I can find sort of conflict of interest policies with the Select Board? Because it does seem there's like, there's a lot of conflict of interest just inherently with that.
Sure. So the Select Board would be covered under what on the town website is under Documents and then Policies, Ordinances, Procedures, and Resolutions. And on that page, under General Ordinances and Policies, there's one that says Conflicts of Interest and Ethical Conduct Policy. And that's the one that was adopted May of 2019. And it does talk about, this is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Model Policy that we did lightly adapt. I don't recall what exactly we may have edited at the time from the model policy to make it suitable for Brandon. But it does talk about the difference between a real conflict, which is direct, a real conflict, conflict which is indirect, talks about an apparent conflict and things of that nature. And one of the reasons that the VLCT policies, their models, are so useful to small towns and to Select Boards in Vermont is that they recognize the nature of living in a small community. In a community of 4,000 people, it's entirely possible, and in fact, it's likely that you're more active and you're more... What, community-minded citizens are going to both be engaged in some enterprises and in some public service. And I think this policy does a good job at going and saying, yes, we recognize that there will be times when there will be a Board member with a direct conflict of interest because they stand to gain financially from a decision of the Select Board. And it lays out a procedure for that person to follow and it lays out a procedure for the Board to follow if the Board doesn't believe that the person is following the appropriate procedure. Other than that, I'm not entirely aware of an outside slash neutral third party who would have been asked to weigh in on a potential or perceived conflict of interest in the time that I've served on the Board. It's not to say that it's not happened. But the policy is pretty clear because the law in Vermont is pretty clear that elected officials are answerable to the voters who elect them and to no one else. And that's kind of the bottom line of the policy is that if someone runs for Select Board and, you know, the Board thinks, hey, you ought to recuse yourself from this or you ought to sit this one out, they can encourage, they can warn, they can advise, but they can't require. You know, the person who is elected has got the obligation and the authority to discharge the duties of their office as they see fit. And they are answerable to the voters who elected them. So that is my attorney at flaw. That's not attorney at law. That is my uneducated understanding of the conflict of interest as it has come up in municipal government in Vermont. Dave?
Thanks.
So just a couple more things to add to that. When we work with someone like, I'm going to pick on Markowski's again, we have to follow state and federal procurement policies because most of these projects are state or federally funded. And usually, if anything is state-funded, it automatically has federal funds to it. So it's totally based on a sealed bid policy. And that's how we actually have engineers and we have, did approve it and read through all of the bid docs as well as V-Trans. So we don't, we don't really... It's not like the Select Board has 100% say on that. It has to go through a procurement policy based on who we are being... Where the money's coming from. As far as the transfer station, that's another one where that's really left up to me as the town manager to hire whatever contractor or person. We actually came to a decision, and someone from the Select Board can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that the town has washed its hands of the transfer station. We don't, we don't have any... There's no swapping of money with the transfer station on us anymore other than a rental situation on the land. The folks that are running it are independent of the town right now. So they're not directly working for the town of Brandon. We really decided that it was either going to be one of those. We need to take 100% ownership and control of it or get rid of the 100% of ownership and control of it. And we opted for the latter. So I hope that clears it up a little bit. And I could certainly provide our procurement policy that we use for local stuff as well as what we have to follow when we use state and federal funding.
Okay. No, this is really helpful. I just noticed it was on the agenda for town commissions. And so I just wanted to make sure that there was at least some policy in place. And Tracy's family does a really great job and his wife makes the best donuts in town. So yeah, I just wanted to check. So thank you.
Yeah, I wish we had something to do with the donuts, but none of us can take that further.
Excellent. Thank you. Further public comment before we go along?
If my memory is correct, I should correct that last comment. I think it's Tracy that makes the donuts.
Not all the time.
What?
I had heard this story.
I had no idea. They're amazing.
My recipe.
Yeah, they're really good.
Thank you.
I do see both state representatives and I thank them for being here. Do you have anything you want to share with us tonight? I see a hand from Butch.
Actually, no, Steph, I was just waving hi, checking in to see what's going on in Brandon and happy to be here, just listening and trying to understand what the community is doing.
Thank you, Butch. We did have a noise ordinance hearing on Saturday morning and another one just before the Select Board meeting. And that's kind of what the community is up to right now is talking about the propriety of noise and regulation of it on the local level. Representative Jerome, Stephanie Jerome is here.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I had to pop off for another call a second ago, but glad to be back. So I, you know, I guess just want to keep sort of beating the drum about businesses applying for grants during the pandemic. So the PPP program is another round of that and it's going to be open, it's open for, you know, small businesses and sole proprietors, I believe. So I really encourage people to apply to those. And then the bill hasn't completely passed yet. It's in the Senate, but there's a whole another round of grants that are going to be open to newer businesses and businesses that maybe started in 2019 or 2020 and weren't eligible for the last round of grants. So that would be from the state, the state. And, you know, there's $10 million set aside at the moment for that. So I wanted just to say that people should, in order to apply, you should get your taxes done now. You should also apply for those PPP grants. And as soon as that bill is passed and the rules are set, then you can be ready to apply for those grants, for those businesses that got left out during the last round. So we're really, in my committee, we're really trying hard to help those businesses to survive. And I know it's been such a difficult time for all of our small businesses. And Vermont is mostly small businesses. So I'll keep, I'll keep talking about that and then, as we go forward. And then there's been a lot of fast and furious action in the House floor. And this coming week, a big bill that's going to, I think is, should be real big important to Brandon is a broadband bill. And it's going to help fund the Communication Union Districts and help with what they're doing and what Bill has done when he's created the Otter Creek Communication Union District. So just want to keep that in front of you. And then there's also been a couple of pretty good bills to help schools. So I'm excited about that, too. So I'll just kind of keep the information flowing. And a lot happening this year. It's been a crazy, crazy year in the legislature, but we're doing the best we can. So feel free to reach out to me anytime you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you to both Stephanie and Butch for sharing and for listening. Do I see a hand from Bernie Carr, something to contribute?
I just want to piggyback on Steph there. I had a Zoom meeting with the Federal Chamber of Commerce Economic Director. And he really stressed that there's some big restaurant help coming up here in April. Significant restaurant help. The state of Vermont is getting, he thinks, about $1 billion out of this COVID money. One of the things that the restaurants, pubs, bars can do, they can show their 2019 income per quarter, compare it to their 2020 income with the COVID situation, and they will just get a grant for the difference of that amount. It's as simple as that. So as he said, as the information gets brought forward coming in April, we'll make sure that gets out to everybody. And there's also some significant tax incentives with employees, like $7,000 per employee if you can show a certain amount of loss from 2019 to 2020. And that is per quarter. So technically, if you could show those losses over the course of the fourth quarter, you have up to $28,000 that you could get as a grant. So as Stephanie said, there's a lot of big money coming down through to try to help the smaller businesses and especially the hardest hit like the restaurants, bars, pubs. So keep an eye on with your tax people, your accountants. I'll try to get it out in our newsletters when the actual backup of information comes down through. But there can be some really big help going into the summer.
Excellent follow-up. Thank you, Bernie. Other public contributions tonight? Okay, item five, how about the Local Emergency Management Plan? Dave Atherton is our Local Emergency Management Director. Dave, can you talk about the plan a little bit?
Sure. This is our time of the year where we do our annual update to our Local Emergency Management Plan. It's based on a lot of forms and information that's requested from Hazard Mitigation and the IRPC helps us, has helped us through the years with it. We've done it. You know, this is my sixth year doing it. And we didn't have a lot of changes this year. A couple of forms changed, but the data stayed the same. So like last year, because we started this Zoom meeting-type stuff about this time last year, I said that the new plan is here sitting on my desk. I can certainly put it in the conference room for anyone that would like to come look at it. It's not real exciting. It just has a lot of information on what we need to do in emergency situations and who to call and vulnerable populations and things like that, maps. And actually, our next item is something that will, it's part of it, too. So yeah, I'm just looking for the annual adoption for the Local Emergency Plan.
Thank you, Dave. What is the pleasure of the Board on the re-adoption of the Local Emergency Management Plan for the year?
I'll move to adopt the plan.
I'll second.
Motion from Tracy with a second from Mike. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of adoption of the plan, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you. Item six is the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement, which I'll also ask the town manager to introduce.
Sure. So this we started doing last year in our Emergency Management Plan. We had done some in the past with neighboring towns for mutual aid. You know, if Pittsburgh needed our loader You know, if, if, if uh, like Pittsburgh needed our loader and you know, time of crisis for them, we'd get down there or um, any, any heavy equipment or whatever. Um, this is more with all of the members and then, you know, in the regional planning commission uh, area for Rutland. So um, you guys did approve it last year. Uh, it's just, it wasn't much of an update here this year. Uh, and they just look for annual renewal of it as well.
Pleasure of the board?
I'll move to approve the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Mutual Aid.
Okay.
Motion from Mike and a second from Tracy to approve the emergency mutual aid through IRPC. Any discussion? Dave, has this been uh, called upon in the past year where we had it? Like, did we loan anything out or um, take anything in?
Well, not due to this, but we did, we actually have a cruiser on loan to Pittsburgh right now, which I think I mentioned in the old meeting or two ago that
You did mention last time.
Had some damage from a windstorm. So um, yeah, so you know, it's, I guess it sort of worked already. But uh, no, we haven't had to use it yet and I kind of hope we don't have to, you know, probably has to.
Further discussion or public comment? If not, all in favor of adopting the emergency mutual aid agreement with IRPC, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. Uh, item seven is something held over from a previous meeting. Um, we introduced a potential policy to avoid real or con, real or apparent conflict of interest in board appointments. And that's in the packet and I assume it made the public packet. Um, so basically it says uh, in four things. Um, if someone's on the select board, they can't serve on another board or in another position that the select board appoints. And that was one and two, basically. And then if you're on another board or commission that the select board appoints, and then you either get appointed to fill a vacancy on the select board or you get elected to it, you got to quit the other thing to stay on the select, to serve on the select board. And further says that we won't appoint a second member of the same household to a single board or commission. And that's um, that's kind of as a, an enhancement of the previously adopted conflict of interest policy that I referenced earlier in the meeting that we adopted in May of 2019. What's the pleasure of the board on the policy that was submitted with the four points about avoiding real or apparent conflicts of interest in board appointments?
Seth, I'd like to just have some discussion on it.
Yeah, we can discuss first, absolutely.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept it, but I'd like with some discussion.
You can do the discussion first. We're, we're allowed to do that. Yep.
Um, on the appointed, going back to the appointed part, um, there is, there is a few, I'm thinking of Mosquito District. Um, the transportation and Rutland County solid waste that uh, we, we don't have a, not like the planning commission or the DBR where we've appointed a board. Um, we, I think Dave is a Dave is a representative right now, but I almost think that we ought to build to appoint a select person for a, a board that we haven't, to a position like that that we haven't appointed. I, I'm just thinking out loud, those were a couple, three boards that I could think of that didn't have anything to do with a, a complete board. Don't know what anybody else's thought is or?
Well, another one, Tracy is, you know, I'll, I'd obviously be willing to give up the, the deputy firework position which is on the list of appointed positions. So that would open up a, you know, we got to appoint somebody else for that position also.
I mean, I, like I said, I understand the, like I said, the, the DBR, the planning commission, um, where we've got a group of people on there, not having a board member, but it's that one individual. And just looking for comments on that or whatever the board's pleasures. I can, I can go either way. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
How about Tim and then uh, Dave?
I'm sorry, I stopped when I saw your hand up, Dave, but um, since I've been recognized. Um, I, I wonder if it might be appropriate to um, you know, give ourselves a little latitude by putting in a fifth point that says that um, um, that just gives us flexibility. That says, you know, we can um, make appointments um, uh, apart from these guidelines um, when necessary.
We can always waive a policy. And I think that that would be the usual way to do it. If you thought this was, if you thought the policy was in general appropriate, but you thought there was a moment when it wouldn't be appropriate, I, it, you know, boards do from time to time.
It's just that I've seen that language on other things that we've passed that says that, you know, we can make um, a, an appointment um, as we see fit. I mean, um, and, and that way we won't be bound. Um, I mean, if, if we look at the very next policy, um, that talks about um, I, I just think it might be helpful to say it, that's all.
Okay, yeah. Dave?
So I think Tracy has a good point here that some of these positions are more of a town representative type position, like regional planning commissioner or transportation or uh, wait, solid waste. Um, where I know when I go to these meetings, there are a good share of selectmen that sit on these boards because they are representative of their town. Um, I mean ideally, like it'd be nice to have someone on the regional planning commission that's on the plan, our planning commission. Um, you know, because then there's, there's that sort of flow with who does what there. Um, yeah, I think, I think it would benefit to have some of these represented by town officials. Only because they're representing us outside of the town. They're not, it wouldn't be something more of, you know, there's a selectman on the planning commission and what sort of, you know, power struggle or whatever is that. I think that was more of what this was about. Um, and um, yeah, I, I don't think it would hurt to have it as a, as a, someone that's representing us outside of a town.
I see a comment in the chat on the side from Sue Gage, uh, maybe suggesting that boards with a regional context might be treated. I, I'm taking that as saying she's suggesting boards in a regional context might be treated differently. It was expressed, yes?
That's what I meant. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for that thought. It's a good thought. More discussion? So do we feel that uh, are we coming to a consensus that we're looking for a policy of this sort that's inwardly directed toward Brandon boards and committees, but we're looking to not have this policy in place for outward looking things like multi-town districts, BLSG, transportation, things of that nature? Or is that, is that incorrect?
I, I think that's right.
I can see that. I could, I could, uh, I could see the wisdom there. And I'll, I just want to say for the folk, for the benefit of the folks on the call and the record, um, that whatever we do with this, um, this is going to exceed the requirements of both the policy that the town already adopted in 2019 and the uh, requirements of Vermont state law on the topic. Sue Gage?
I just wanted to comment on, on BLSG, which is a little bit different. I, and, and there's a financial piece there. And I, I just think you need to weigh that as well. Um, because we do fund them and I know there's been some issues in Salisbury that um, maybe that board not fall under that regional context or whatever.
That's a good point. Um, but don't we fund solid waste the same way? Dave, don't we fund solid, Rutland County solid waste in the operating budget?
Well, we've, well, not now because it's done independently, but we do fund uh, regional planning commission too. So I don't know. That's a, that's a, I see where Sue's going out with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it totally, it makes sense, but it, I don't know. It might be, it might be a position by position type thing here for some of these just because of the, I don't know, the delicacy with them, I guess.
Yeah, I, I liked the thought that Sue expressed at the beginning of kind of categorizing the, the two different possibilities kind of within Brandon boards and Brandon plus other towns boards. That seemed like kind of a clean way to, to treat it. But I also appreciate the points that have recently, recently been raised about, you know, the financial aspect of a BLSG membership and assessment and things of that nature. So uh, at this point you do, um, go ahead, Tim.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um,
I was going to say at this point, I think that maybe is the direction we have to do is, is choose which, choose whether we're going to make a category kind of policy or whether we're going to list actual positions, which is not as preferable to me, but might be more sensible.
I, I think the thing I was responding to is when Dave just said that it seems almost like we need to go to a position by position um, kind of thing. And I, I almost feel like we're getting uh, to the point where um, we should be aware of these conflicts when we appoint and make the decision at that time. Um, you know, we're a small enough community, so um, we don't always have a lot of um, uh, we don't have, you know, lots and lots of people willing to serve. As we can see, we have a number of vacancies now. And um, so I, I almost wonder if um, if we shouldn't be aware of these guidelines, but you know, make our appointments um, with them in mind every time. I guess I question whether we need a policy for this.
Other, other thoughts? Do we need a policy on this? Any public input? Okay, we don't have a motion or anything on the floor. Um, so I'm, I'm back to asking, what's the pleasure of the board about uh, this policy that was introduced at the previous meeting and that we're considering right now?
Well, any way that uh, you could add some verbiage in there?
Well, it can be adjusted. Yeah, it absolutely can be adjusted.
And?
Do you want to start listing, um, you want to start listing individual appointments? Um, like yes, you can or no, you can't kind of things? Or do you want to do it in more of a category way and uh, and say you can't if it's a town board, but you can if it's a regional board?
I mean, I think, I think that'd be fine, but uh, I mean, it's, it's something, I think it's something we can work on. I don't know if we need to, I don't know if there's any rush to, to do it. I think it's just something we can work on and move forward with it.
Well, there's, yeah, absolutely. There's no rush. Um, but this is almost like a working session on this document at this point. So we can, we can do a little bit of work on it now, or we can just say we're going to go home and sleep on it. And uh, anybody can offer a draft at the next board meeting, you know? I mean, I can offer one and someone else can offer one that's slightly different and we can figure out which one is best suited to the town. That's, that's absolutely fine.
Can I make a motion that, that we table this policy for the time being and uh, review it on our own and come up with ideas for our next weekly meeting?
Sure.
Next meeting, regular meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion to table till the next regular meeting. Is there a second?
I think that.
Second from Brian.
Are we going to discuss? Cause Dave said his hand up. I think he has some input.
Oh, Dave, what do you got?
Well, now that I've used it, figured out how to use this new hand thing, I like to put it up a lot. Um, this, the one that's written in, in your guys' packet right now does say that, um, you know, the, writing the first, the first uh, bullet there, uh, that serving select board member by virtue of their position on the select board self-disqualifies from serving on a town board or commission whose members are appointed by the select board. Um, it doesn't say regional or town, it just says town. So um, I, I think you guys have already made the decision by writing that, that it doesn't say regional board on it. So.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree with you. I didn't, I didn't catch that, but you're right.
But then, so you want to remove the second point in its entirety? Because that's basically where we would be sending people out to other boards that are multi-town boards.
Yeah.
I think your first sentence gets the point across.
Mike, can I ask you to withdraw the motion to table?
I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you, because they're not debatable. Alright, so if we're keeping one, because we think one makes sense because it already has the word town board, right? Or commission, right? Are we going to delete two? Or adjust it in some way?
Why? They're all dead.
Any thoughts on this? Delegate alternate representative coordinator. Um, the delegate alternate representative generally would be going out to other towns. Uh, you want to, you want to keep that or, or throw it out?
Let's get rid of two.
What's that, Brian?
Let's get rid of two.
Yeah, let's get rid of two.
Get rid of two?
Well, I think Sue's comment was the BLSG counts as one of those things. Is that, is that right? Did I hear correctly?
The BLSG um, is a delegate from the town or representative from the town. Yes.
And I think she was suggesting that that might be one that also doesn't have a select board overlap, if, if I heard her correctly.
She's still here? Yeah. Uh, Sue, your, your concern was financial?
Well, I mean, we pay the BLSG like 40 some odd thousand dollars. We pay the region planning commission 500. I mean, there's a big price differential there. That, that, my only concern was the financial piece and the, of financial conflict potentially.
I can, I guess if, can you, can you do a clarifying question for me before I call on Dave? What's the conflict? Um, what would the conflict be if a select board member was serving on BLSG and then BLSG asked the town for the appropriation?
Um.
I mean, I don't see any benefit to the select board member.
No, certainly not. I, I'm not, well, I just, it looked like you were, I didn't, you were concerned about conflict between the select board decisions and some, their service on some of the other boards, I guess. And I just, uh, I, I just, I, I didn't really see a difference between the, you know, the, the fact that there's a BL, BLSG financial piece, which obviously if you're on the board, you, you would like to see that get paid. Um, so I don't know. I, there may not be perceived, perceived conflict perhaps.
Okay, thanks. Dave?
Uh, it's still a regional uh, board too. And it's not like we can uh, negotiate what the fee is for the town. It comes from the Mosquito District and um, we pay what they invoice us for. So that might might be a different way to look at it too.
I agree.
It is a regional board though.
Further discussion? Are we at retaining number one, keeping, uh, sorry, retaining number one and eliminating number two still?
Yeah.
I think the last thing I heard. How about number three? Keep it? Discard it?
No, leave it on there.
I think we can keep number three and four.
Right.
Keep three, keep four. You want to add in a five that talks about, um, you know, the board can make, make an appointment as it sees fit? Um, I'll just ask Tim to, you know, make some clarifying language.
Yeah, I mean, um, just like the following page where it says the board may choose to make uh, an appointment as they see fit.
Alright, so um, does that sound good? If, if we come back next time and look at a document that's got number one, number three, number four, number five, but not number two? Maybe?
What's good?
Go in that direction? This has been a thoughtful discussion. Thank you, everybody, for the contributions and for the uh, input. So um, we're going to do that on a consensus of the board basis. I don't think we're going to have a vote because the policy will be voted at the next meeting. Okay? Very good. Uh, how about item eight, appointment of an animal control officer? Um, Dave, what is, what's the introductory?
Well, um, as you know, we've put this out in the paper a few times. We posted it on the big list that we had of uh, see the folks interested. The board did appoint um, Mr. Tim Kingston as the interim. Um, he did reach out and say that he'd be interested in doing it as we needed it. Um, no one else has come forward to be the animal control officer. And speaking with Tim last week, he said that he would uh, move forward with becoming our, our, our post interim animal control officer. And he's actually here this evening, if.
Yes. Could we have Tim Kingston? Thank you for being here. Thank you for serving as the interim. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about with the board or to advise the public about regarding your animal control philosophy or how you see the role in the community?
Thank you for having me. As of right now, I've already had four different calls, animal related. One was loose dogs on seventy-three. It seems to have resolved itself. The people have actually moved out. The owners of the dogs that were being a pest to people walking along seventy-three. There was a dog bite also that Tom Kilpeck responded to and because it became a health officer concerned, ultimately it was turned to him. There was, the most recent one I had was a found cat in Forest Brook Development. A person had found a cat underneath a car. They were highly allergic to cats. They asked me if I could come and provide them with a litter box and some food. So I, you know, went to the to the local store, grabbed some supplies and found out that they also have a a small dog that was not happy having a cat living in the garage. So my daughter and I decided we would take the cat with our cat carrier. Cat was very friendly, spent the night in the barn with the horses because it was cold and windy. And that night, or the following day, I had contacted Sue Gage via social media to put a posting out to see if we could find the cat's owner. I had also put up the sandwich board at Forest Brook Development with my phone number to call. Ultimately, Mamie Brown helped me to place the cat with Rockland County Humane. And that's all I know. And there was a call from PD the other day on a dog that was also loose on seventy-three and we found that owner too, so. I have purchased a dog or animal control pole, which is essentially a slip type noose for handling dogs should they become aggressive. And I think one thing that the board in the town needs to look at is to have the ACO have a large enough portable kennel. Should we have to take a dog out of a particular situation that it'd be much easier to handle than having to, you know, ride loose in the backseat of my pickup or or something like that. So I appreciate the opportunity for the position. I'm always available. Been in town for a lot of years. We are farmers. We've been around animals our whole lives. We've cared and taken in a number of animals for many, many years. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Kingston. Tim Giles has a comment or a question?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Tim, for doing this. As you know, the animal control officer's been front and center for a little while. I want to be sure that you have the right tools and training to do the work. And so is there anything we can do to support you with equipment or training that you need?
So I've taken upon to do a little internet training. The dog pole that I purchased had a link to the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. They are the ones that answer a number of of calls. And there was just a brief training on how to properly use the pole. So I've been doing that. And I've also looked at some of the other states that have real active animal control departments and what they might have for training. I believe there's a institute, the acronym, I believe, is NACA. And it's, it escapes me now what that stands for, but I will follow up on that training.
Yeah, I would certainly love to make sure you have all the training that you need. The other question I have is on being a humane officer. Are you aware of that aspect of animal control? And do you feel ready to step in when required to do that kind of work?
Dave and I have talked about it. So what I understand from the position is it's primarily domestic animals, dogs and cats. Should there, you know, be a need for somebody to get involved with a larger type of animal? I mean, obviously, we've had horses. I've been around cows and many other livestock. Should somebody need my assistance, my phone is always on.
Yeah, I think the nature of my question more has to do with the humane officer in, as in animal welfare and awareness of the laws governing animal welfare, whether or not they're domestic, you know, pets or or otherwise. I certainly have a heightened awareness of the importance of including all the right players in the state when we start getting into, you know, larger issues. But I just want to be sure that you're comfortable with knowing what the laws are for a humane officer and able to enforce them.
Yeah, I do have the book that BLSGT had put out. And I've read through that pretty extensively. I think I froze up here. Not sure if anybody can hear me or not.
I can hear you now. Yeah, you were breaking up for a moment.
Okay. So yeah, I do have the handbook. I've gone through the state's website. You know, I I know, I know what animal neglect is. I know what animal abuse is. I've seen the warning signs before. We will definitely have to have probably a meeting just to go over the finer points and to see what.
Oh, I think you were talking and you muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, maybe you said everything you said.
I'm just getting bits and pieces of this conversation, so.
Tim Giles, anything else? Was that?
No, that's the the main thrust of my questions. And I think what I heard Tim say at the end was that it might be appropriate to to fully flesh out what the humane officer aspects might be. So it might make sense to sit down and talk with him when we don't have the internet in between us, just to be sure we're all on the same page.
Yep, I think that's a great idea.
Tim, we did get recently, Tim Kingston, we did get something from a Brandon resident talking about House Bill four twenty-one. And I think that both of the state representatives have said goodbye at this point. It's about proposed mandatory training for humane officers. And I just wanted to kind of make that flag that as some people say, for something that maybe we should keep an eye on. Dave, I can forward you this, and I don't have Tim's contact, but we can maybe make sure that we're aware of that going forward. Some humane officer training, Dave Atherton?
Sure. It's just the bill right now.
Right, right. I get that. I get that. And then, Tim Kingston, I just wanted to touch base with you about your comfort level or lack of it with the animal control ordinance as it is written in Brandon at the moment. Is that something that you've looked at? Do you feel that it allows you the authority or that it gives you the gives you the authority that you need to do the job correctly, appropriately? Or do you think it's something that you would encourage the board to reexamine in any way?
No, I think it's well-written. I did notice that there is not specific mention to cats. It looks like it's primarily aimed at dogs, but I'm sure that can be, you know, added.
Yeah, I think that we named specific animals in some cases that were statutorily authorized for us to do that. And I believe that the intent of the board was that domestic pets would, would fall under, you know, the animal control. So kind of cats would be under that domestic pets umbrella. I think the key distinction we were trying to make was with agricultural animals, working farm animals, things like that. Right. Other questions for Tim Kingston or comments or public input? If not, what's the pleasure of the board on Tim Kingston's willingness to be appointed as the animal control officer?
I'll make a motion to appoint him.
If he moves and Mike makes a second, is there further discussion? There's not? All in favor of appointing Tim Kingston as Brandon's animal control officer, say aye. There are none opposed. That's unanimous. Tim, thank you again for stepping up to do it on an interim basis. And thank you for being willing to continue on in a, in a not interim basis now going forward. And I hope that you will keep in good touch with Dave. I hope that you'll let the board know through Dave of what you see as challenges in the job that maybe our policy doesn't envision. Or training or equipment, that kind of thing, Dave's aware of. There's some budget room for training and equipment, and it's not a great deal. But it's something that the board recognizes is the town's, it's the community's responsibility to provide to the animal control officer so that you can be successful in your program. So thank you. Could we take eight A at this point, which is the bid results for town lot number nine dash one dash twenty-three?
So if you guys remember, this was the swamp lot up off Long Swamp that a gentleman had come to ask about an easement. It was determined to put it out to bid. The only bid on it is from the person who requested the easement. Their bid amount was three hundred dollars. That would be Trevor Burgevin. So the results weren't hard to tally up. And what does the board choose to do?
I make a motion to accept the bid and move forward with giving him, getting him the property.
Well, can I, I just, this must have been before I was on. I just wouldn't mind knowing information as to the whole operation that they're asking for an easement for, I guess, through the swamp.
We're not considering an easement at this time. They did, there was a property owner who requested an easement. The board was not comfortable giving an easement. The board instead suggested that he make an offer to purchase the town-owned lot. And so that's, that's what has come to us now is an offer to purchase a town-owned lot that I believe, Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it lies between two parcels owned by the purchaser.
It does, and it's landlocked.
And it's twenty-six acres, is that correct?
Correct. And it's, and it's swamp.
Well, the part that he needs is clearly not swamp, which is
Yeah, I understand that, but the biggest majority of it's swamp and it's landlocked, if I have looked at it correctly.
Yeah. Does that help, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to put a location, an exact location, kind of visualize what it looks like, I guess, right now, but.
I don't, I don't know that it is, or I don't know that it's viewable from a public road at this point, right? I mean, it's there's a really narrow piece that comes down, but I don't think it even comes down to frontage.
It has no road frontage.
Right. So he was asking for the easement to construct a leach field, I believe, on a house that he planned to build on land he already owned. And the board's, the board's consensus was that we didn't want to allow an easement to construct a leach field on a town-owned parcel, but we were willing to divest the parcel to him so he could purchase the parcel and use the, use that piece of the lot that he needs to construct the leach field for the new home that he wants to build. So I have a motion, but I think no second. Is there a second? Second from Brian. Is there further discussion?
I might just, for the sake of consistency, observe that three hundred dollars for twenty-six acres seems like a small amount, even given the fact that swampland is, you know, typically between a hundred and two hundred dollars an acre. I certainly am in favor of getting it on the tax rolls, because I think twenty-six acres is actually going to produce, even swampland is going to be a you know, a benefit to the town. So I see this as you know, being positive going forward. I think it's just unfortunate that the the per acre value is so low.
I might add to that, Tim, I understand where you're coming from, from that, but we had one bid, so the fair market value is kind of zero right now because there's no market out there for it. Nobody wanted it, except for this guy.
No, I hear you. I think in the future, you know, what's going through my head, and this is not a criticism, Dave, but it's just a, an input, is that another time, I think it might be good to put a minimum bid of kind of the low end of what, you know, swampland's selling for.
Well, you guys are the ones that set the low bid, not me, and you set it for a hundred dollars, so.
I guess I didn't realize we set the low bid. I thought you had set the low bid. My feeling is that this is going to be, you know, it's, it's an asset to this person to have a home with, you know, a leach field that works. And so ultimately, it's going to be a value to him and that having him pay, you know, a more market rate perhaps another time might be a way to, you know, meet everybody's needs.
It's also, it's also an asset to the town because there's going to be a building on a piece of property that there wouldn't be able to be a building on.
True.
If he didn't buy it.
No, it's true.
There's a note in the chat that I'll just share with folks on the call from Sue, the town clerk, Sue Gage, the town clerk. She says that we've had a number of folks call, but quickly lost interest when they found it was landlocked. So, you know, landlocked is, it's tough to, it's tough to say it's worth, you know, what twenty-six acres that has frontage is worth. Further discussion? If not ready to vote, all in favor of, well, starting the process, right? We have to go through the statutory process. What do you call it, Dave? The ten fifty-one notice or something like that? Some number?
Sixty-one.
Ten sixty-one notice. Okay, so all in favor of accepting the bid and starting the process? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Was that unanimous then?
Sure, leave it as unanimous.
Thank you. I know in electronic meetings we are allowed to vote by voice, but if it's other than unanimous, we do have to take roll calls. So that's, that's just a note to ourselves. Okay, in item nine, we have an unusual item, which is a purchase order to Earl's Truck Repair for repairs on truck number six. What's the pleasure of the board? You have the information in the packet.
I think the great news on this is we got two men on the board who know a lot about trucks.
I'd like to let Dave go ahead with a with a, with his package or whatever.
Is that a motion, Tracy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it. I have looked at different trucks and it's the truck is probably those, yeah, your truck, from what I've gathered, is probably worth somewhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars repaired. But we need, we need to fix it.
So this is just an estimate that we're looking at right now, or has the work already been done and they're expecting payment?
Estimate.
Okay. So I mean, looking through the list, I mean, you're talking, you're talking turbocharger, the whole unit, the whole top end of the engine, basically, is what I'm seeing. So I mean, this truck is not worth anything to us to get rid of unless it's fixed.
Right.
The downfall is it's not worth much to us after it's fixed.
You know, it's like I said to Dave, it's something that that we're gonna have to run. I mean, it's, it's not something that we can just take and fix it and get rid of it.
Right, right. No, but, but even, even fixed and back to normal at this point for this year anyways. I mean, you're, yeah, there's, there's no way, you know, you're not going to get the value out of this truck by trading it in towards a new one. you're, yeah, there's, there's no way, you know, you're not going to get the value out of this truck by trading it in towards a new one.
No, and there, our, our downfall is, um, Dave can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, to replace it right now, we're looking at eighteen months. Uh, Mike, I get that right, Dave?
Yeah, if we order a truck, so if we put a truck out for, you know, bid to get a, you know, from whoever, Clark and all the other companies, we're looking at about eighteen months from buying the cab and getting everything built on it. That's how far out the the company is with putting all the accessories on it. And it doesn't matter if it's a single axle tandem, doesn't matter, that's what it is. Unless we buy something off the shelf, which this is the problem with this truck right now, is it was before my time, before anyone else is on this board, it was a low bid and it was the basic of basic trucks. I was telling Tracy today, it doesn't even have a rear diff lock in it, so it's a, it's a I mean, we shouldn't do that again.
You're talking eighteen months build time, that's not including, say, the, the four to six months of specking it out and getting it set up the way that they actually need it.
We already have the specs on it. Sean said, yeah, we've got truck specs, so.
I, I did, I did call Clark's Truck Center today just to find out. They do have a truck, a single axle that is available. Uh, they could, they've, they've got it to be specked out with a Viking body. Um, it's a twenty-five thousand nine ninety-nine G V W, which keeps it under C D L, which is lighter than the truck that we already have. And I had it right here in front of me, but it was a hundred and it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and some odd dollars. So we can, it's we've got it, we've got to fix what we've got at this point in time, I, I believe. But what I would also like to do is I would like to authorize Dave to go and because we do have a two thousand eleven, it's going to have to be replaced. And I would like to give Dave the authorization to start putting that in place. So eighteen month or six, eighteen months, whatever it is from now, that we could be sitting with a new truck. That's my, my thoughts. I'm, would love to hear from anybody else.
So just one other thing too, that I discussed this with Tracy too, and Sean and I have talked about a lot, actually former public works director and I talked about a lot, that replacing the next truck with another tandem would be beneficial with the town, especially for the twenty or thirty thousand dollar difference between the two. We've learned real quick that you can haul twice as much, make less trips, cut down on man hours. You've got more weight in your truck for plowing and it makes sense with the amount of roads that we have. So, you know, our, our ultimate fleet would be two tandems, a single axle and the two five fifties. So we would, I, I would like to get specs and everything to bid, put this out to bid for another tandem.
Right, I mean, that would make a lot more sense because if memory serves me right, this truck was doing the high pond roof and the long, the long dirt stretches outside of town too, right?
It used to. Now the tandem does all of the, well, the tandem does like birch hill and stuff. I don't know if they're going to pipe on with that one or not.
Right, right. But I mean, regardless, you got, you got how many miles of road outside of the downtown area that are long, long stretches that you could do multiple roads and one load of sand, it's all rather than having to spend more time coming back and loading it.
Forty-seven miles of dirt and the rest of it is pavement and there's eighty-six miles total, so.
Yeah, there's a
It's a lot.
Does it sense to get a regular schedule of truck replacement so we kind of see, you know, five years in advance when a truck's coming up and?
We're trying to get there, Tim. This is, you know, the, the Mac was one of the first new trucks in a while and, you know, the thirteen is the next one down and it's just, it wasn't a great process for a while, so. We're there. I mean, we've been able to do it with the five fifties, we've, we had to do it with equipment. That was the first priority, you know, with our grader and everything, so we're getting there. Obviously, it's a lot of money, takes a little bit of time.
And we have a lot of roads for three trucks.
Yep.
You know, eighty-six miles of road is a lot for, a lot for just three trucks to, to do. You look at even the state, those twenty mile road with three trucks.
To plow, to plow one storm both lanes is the same distance in miles as it is from here, to drive from here to Boston one way. Oh, yeah, there's a lot of road.
Right.
So is, my only concern as I hear this is that if we put twenty thousand dollars into this truck, it's not going to be worth twenty thousand dollars to sell it. And I'm wondering if there's any other creative solutions like, you know, leasing something temporarily for eighteen months to get us through to when we can get? Sure, go ahead.
This isn't the truck that we'd be getting rid of, Tim, it'd be the two thousand eleven, be the one that's older.
Well, I think that's what I'm concerned about, is that if we patch this together, is it going to make eighteen months and eighteen, I mean, it seems like we're going to have another problem with this one because it's not worth a lot to us and it seems like a mistake to, I mean, you know, this is kind of like what we all do with used vehicles, is at some point it doesn't make sense to put more money into keeping an old vehicle going. And I'm, and it feels like we've reached that on this one, when I hear that we put twenty-one thousand dollars into this, we're not going to get it out.
The, the two thousand eleven, it needs to be replaced, I think is worse when you start doing, that's one, that's one the dump is bad on, or the hoist is rotted out, Dave, or not good?
Yeah, it's got more corrosion on it just from salt and not great management or maintenance practices a few years ago, so, yeah, it's
Really, we need to get rid of both trucks.
Well, we need, then we need to buy two trucks, so I don't think we can budget that right now.
Right, I think, I think with looking at the list of things that are done, I mean, this truck, you know, with a, with a good maintenance schedule through the town crew would would last easily another three to four years anyways.
Right.
With, I mean, you're putting basically the whole top half of the motor back together with all new parts, by the looks of the list.
And, and it's only got, what, fifty? Fifty-six thousand miles on it? Is that, I read that right on the other sheet?
Forty-eight thousand on this truck.
Thousand.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at a truck with under fifty thousand miles and you're putting a, a whole top end of the engine, a lot of this could be, be stretched out and lasted a lot longer with a better, maybe a better adjustment to the, to the maintenance program on it, you know?
Which I think going forward, that's what we have. We have a, we have a very confident crew to, to take care of that maintenance and
Right, yeah, I mean, this truck's coming from, well, what, what I'm going to call is a, a lack crew from way back beyond. But I think the crew that we have now is more than capable of, of taking care of this truck, knowing that, that, you know, we just dumped twenty-one thousand dollars into the engine. And it has to last them.
Sounds good to me.
I want to thank all of the contributions, thank all of you for making your contributions to a topic I know nothing about. Tracy did have a motion, I believe, to authorize the purchase order. Is there a second to Tracy's motion?
I'll second that.
Second from Mike. Discussion for discussion, Dave, I'm just going to ask you, and I don't know if this is a fair question or not, so I, I understand it's an estimate, is this a not to exceed purchase order or what? How does that work?
Uh, this is the quote that they gave us after diagnosing the truck at how much it was going to cost, so. Um, I think the majority of it is parts and, you know, that, I don't know. I mean, it, I hope it comes around twenty thousand dollars. That's why we brought it in to get a, to get an estimate on the price, so. I am not a truck mechanic, I couldn't tell you.
Well, yeah, I'm not asking that. I'm asking, what are we authorizing? Are we authorizing this amount or an amount?
We have the, we have, we have the repairs from Earl's for twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, so.
I think, I think that's the
He can okay the, the, a small amount over that because he has latitude, right, Dave?
Well, I'm, I'm only up to ten thousand dollars, that's why this is in front of you.
Exactly. So if we, if we give him twenty-seven, twenty thousand seven hundred, then Dave can, you know, do anything more than that if it's a little bit more.
I don't know if it really works that way.
I don't.
I think it starts on the base price, so.
I, I, I almost think that Earl's is that's what it's going to cost to fix the truck is the way that I'm kind of reading it.
Yeah, they're, they're usually pretty accurate on their estimates from what we've done in the past. But yeah, I mean, they're going to put it back together for less than five thousand dollars. That's a quarter of the cost of the parts.
Right.
All right, further discussion. Public input, public questions, public comments about this truck. Ready to vote? All in favor of authorizing the purchase order to Earl's Truck Repair for truck number six repairs and the amount of twenty thousand seven twenty-seven thirty-six, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Seth?
Yes?
I'd also like to make a motion to let Dave start pursuing a new tandem. Getting bids, doing whatever we need to do so we can get that in place and get it so it's we've got that eighteen month lead time.
All right, motion to ask the town manager or direct the town manager to start the process of obtaining quotes for another truck. So it's the older one, right? The two thousand eleven, is that what we're talking about?
Right.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Tracy's motion, Mike has seconded. Is there discussion on that? All in favor of that motion to pursue the second tandem, starting that process, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Uh, I, I want to ask you on the board here, whether you want to consider or whether you think this is not well taken. The planning commission is apparently authorized to prepare and recommend capital budgets to the town. And I know that we have in the past had capital improvement plans, we've had equipment inventories at select board level and budget committee level. Those have not always stood the test of time, and I understand that Dave actually alluded to that fact, you know, circumstances change, staffing changes, equipment changes, things like that. Is this something you want to kind of keep at the select board level or is it something you want to consider asking the planning commissioners? Uh, in my, in my select board handbook, it's actually the first of the responsibilities of the planning commission that they list. It's prepare and recommend the capital budget. And then they talk about land development and planning, participate in the regional planning commission and stuff. I don't think we've asked the Brandon Planning Commission to do any capital planning, and I wonder whether you want to consider asking them to do it or keep it ourselves or just take that information under advisement and sleep on it for a little bit.
Seth, I think we can keep that, especially if we're, we're pertaining to, say, a new, new truck every five years or getting them on a replacement plan. Is that what you're getting at?
It's, it's stuff like that, exactly, yep.
I, I think for this instance anyways, I think the, the slot work can certainly I feel it's like we're concerned, we keep that in-house. I don't think we need to source that to the
Okay.
I, I, I would agree.
All right.
I mean, what, what is it? It's, it's figuring out an amount for an estimated cost of a new truck in five years and budgeting it, budgeting it for it. During our, during our budget meetings.
Yeah, it would, right, it would be taking an inventory, looking at, you know, predicted like longevities for the equipment that we do have, what replacement we have, all that jazz, sure, yeah. Dave?
So we've been down this road a few times, just want to give you a little history of it, even my years on the other side of the select board table, that these capital budget plans were brought up and a year later, they weren't being followed because of, who knows? Storms, uh, economy. It's a hard thing to do, especially when boards change frequently and other things, to come up with this sort of capital plan that involves putting large chunks of money aside from, from asking, you know, asking the taxpayers to do it too. I, I think we want to maybe do a little more research on that and see if it's actually something that can be followed. I mean, it's, I've, I remember walking into it and it was on this this document we had called the matrix that I probably, I don't know if any of you guys even ever saw Seth shaking his head. That was one of the big things on there, but it always got pushed aside and pushed aside and you know, we either need to start it and commit to it and hope that the next batch of select board members follow it or it's really not worth anything. Um, and we're asking taxpayers to tie up a lot of their money to plan ahead. You know, now we see that we're on a schedule of the way we buy equipment, you know, we go through this capital leasing, which is, you know, it's very low interest loans. It's worked out well that when we pay something else off, it seems to be that's the time to pick up another piece of equipment. So I just want to throw those other things out there, that, you know, things change quite a bit, so how you want to come up with a capital plan, you know, it's going to be be tricky to follow, I think.
Totally well taken. I ju, I raise it in part because that is one of the questions that were asked at town meeting on a fairly regular basis, maybe not every year, but with some regularity, someone asks, what is the town's plan for equipment or, you know, what is the town's plan about repairing roads? Like, do we have a priority list? And I, I just threw it out as an option. Um, if we do keep it here at the select board level, that is absolutely fine. Um, and if we do acknowledge what Dave has just said, that experience has been that, that kind of in some sense is not worth the paper and effort because funding possibilities change and equipment needs change and, you know, who knew eight years ago or whatever that we would have been in eight years of zero to one to two percent interest on these lease to own purchases kind of thing. I mean, that there, there is no real reason, there's no real benefit to the taxpayers to salt away money for five or six years to purchase when in fact you can borrow money for really no borrowing costs. So, I mean, we, we have learned and, and the fact that we haven't got a plan, I guess, has allowed us to be a little bit more nimble than if we had a plan that we were committed to. So just wanted to talk about it. I think it's good to consider once in a while.
And I, I just, I just want to mention, I, Dave and I did talk this afternoon and eighteen months should put our our lease, one of our leases or two of them. Is that, am I getting that right, Dave? That?
Yep, we're going to be in a pretty good spot to sort of roll over that payment into another new piece of equipment.
Okay, um, is that all to be said on trucks and stuff? We have a warrant for the regular bills.
Make a motion to approve it for fifty-three thousand ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Motion from Tracy, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Brian, any questions on the bills?
Yeah, Dave, I noticed there was an overhead door you got for the salt shed, and it just made me think, I'm curious if overhead door ever came through and tightened up the doors in the, in the building, because I was really curious about that back when we were talking about heating.
They did, yeah, I mean, we kind of had that in the conversation with them before you went down, so, yeah, they, they have come up and tightened things up.
Great.
They did that, I don't know, that was a couple warrants ago that was in there.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Any public questions about the bills on the warrant? Ready to vote? All in favor of the items on the warrant totaling fifty-three thousand ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Okay, so at this point, we got to do the liquor commissioners meeting. I know some people don't stick around for that, so is there any announcements to be made or any other comment anyone would like to make before we recess the select board and do the liquor control commissioners? Sue Gage has a hand up.
I just wanted to let people know that the town clerk is open again to the public. Um, we opened up, we unlocked the door today, so um, we've got some signage up, just asking people to wear masks, continue to wear masks and continue to social distance, one person at a time, but we have opened back up to the public since the aces in town have dropped, so. Let's keep up the good work so we can stay open.
Great news. Thank you, Sue. Other announcements or public comments? Barry, variant, yeah.
Yeah, guys, I just wanted to say, um, on the animal control officer, the swampland purchase and the truck repair, you guys did an excellent job of collaborating ideas and coming up with good accretive upon solution, so good job on that.
Thank you, Barry. Much appreciated. Comment? Okay, if not, at eight fifty, we're going to recess the select board and convene the board of liquor control commissioners. I'll call that board to order at eight fifty. we're going to recess the select board and convene the board of liquor control commissioners. I'll call that board to order at 8:50. Is there a motion regarding the agenda as it was prepared?
Show me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion from Tracy and a second from Brian. I've been asked, or the board's been asked by the town clerk to add on a, an additional first class license renewal for Ripton Mountain Distillery. I would propose adding that under 3A as a second first class liquor license renewal and a, an additional second class liquor license renewal under 3B for the Forestale Grocery and Deli. Forestale Grocery and Deli, uh, add on 3B as an additional second class license renewal, so there'll be four of those. Any objection to adding those there?
No.
This has to do with the state's, um, deadlines for renewals right now and thanks to Sue for explaining that to us.
Could we do that consent agenda?
Yeah, first we got to vote on the agenda, so, um, well, actually, no, we can, we can make the consent agenda first. Is there objection to taking items two, three and four as a consent agenda? Okay, there's not. So we're going to vote on the motion to adopt the agenda as it was amended. The amendments were to add Ripton Mountain Distillery first class, Forestale Grocery and Deli second class and to make the items two, three and four a consent agenda. All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous? The consent agenda is next. All in favor of the consent agenda as it was just established, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Item five.
I'll adjourn liquor control.
College moves to adjourn liquor controls. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Wyman, not debatable. All in favor of adjourning as liquor control commissioners, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? We're adjourned at 8:52. I'll call the select board back to order at 8:52. This has been a workman-like session, starting at 6 o'clock with some interesting contributions from all over the community about, um, potential noise ordinance. Um, we're back here in the public session of the select board, but all that's left on the agenda are two executive sessions. So is there anything else to happen in public session before the board takes votes to enter executive session? Last minute contributions. Bill?
Let the record show that I was up late last night. My back is in, I'm in a lot of pain and that's why I was yawning, Bernie.
Oh, no.
Bill, thank you for being trooper.
I hope you're back better soon.
Bill, I'm sure I had nothing to do. I've been sitting in the same chair for three hours.
How, who is going to get the information that Charlene needs to hear about the executive session times and minutes?
Our clerk?
Mike, can you, can you do that? Have you got Charlene's email address already?
No, I don't, but if you put it in the chat, I can copy it down.
Okay.